Good evening. It's seven o'clock and we have a public hearing which will be followed by a meeting of the Urbana City Council. So I'd like to open the public hearing, and this is concerning the proposed issuance by the city of its revenue bond in a principal amount not to exceed $10 million for the purpose of making a loan to Clark Lindsey Village. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this hearing? Well, since there's absolute silence, I guess no one wants to speak, so I will close the hearing. Okay, I'd like to call the Urbana City Council meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan? Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Smythe? Mayor Pressing? Here. And in view of the tragedy that happened in France, which did affect our sister city, a young man was killed from that area. I'd like to start with a moment of silence for France. Okay, thank you very much. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting for November 2nd, 2015.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Aaron Ammons, seconded by Eric Jacobson to approve the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? I don't see any. Okay, we'll move on. Petitions and communications. Keith Marshall? Did you want to come up and talk to the council? Just take a seat there and speak into the microphone, and you have five minutes. You don't need to take five minutes, but not more than five.
Hi, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to come speak with you today. So I have lived in Urbana the entire 24 years I've been in Champaign-Urbana. I currently live on 704 West Florida Avenue in Urbana, and I'm here to speak about the parking proposal. There's a proposal, first it was to shift parking from the north side to the south side, and now the proposal is to remove parking from Florida. I understand completely that Florida is in bad shape, but I certainly see the removal of parking as problematic for us, both as taxpayers, that we pay a heap and big amount of taxes, particularly since the Carl. I believe my property tax is well over $1,000 a month. But most importantly is, on our street, if we're not able to have parking, the closest parking is going to be on Delaware, and all of our guests are going to have to walk around several blocks to get to our houses. And I also, as someone with two small children, I have a seven-year-old and a six-year-old, have some concerns originally about the south side parking plan just was bringing the traffic closer. The parking is a bit of a buffer for my children on a very, very busy street. And the plan to move to the south side would have removed that buffer completely, and now the proposal to kind of go down the middle reduces that buffer. And it also is very, very difficult to back out of our houses on that busy street, and the parking lane is kind of a buffer for us to be able to pull out backwards onto the street in that parking zone. If that parking is not there, we're pulling out directly into the traffic every day. I also checked on the two blocks in question. There's 22 driveways, all of them are single driveways. We don't have double driveways on that street. So if we have guests come over, really only one guest can park without starting to cause all kind of difficulty and, you know, you've got to pull out, so I can pull out and back and forth. So I just ask you to reconsider that and provide the maintenance on the street that is necessary for a safe street, safe parking on what is one of the signature roads in our town. Right? There's no surprise that many, many people who go jogging jog down that street for a reason. It's a beautiful street, it is kind of a showcase street in our town, and I would hate to see it just become a ramshackle mess with no parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary and Pat Shea?
Hi there, we are Gary and Pat Shea. We live at 708 West Florida Avenue. We're here to speak on the same topic. First, I'd like to say that Bill Gray and the Traffic Commission have been wonderful in listening to us and trying to find a solution that the residents are happy with. Unfortunately, what's come to the table now is something we think is a mistake. We think the city needs to fix the road as it is, and then amend your capital improvement plan so next summer you can fix it properly. The issues that Keith talked about are the same ones we were going to. I will simply tell you now that I've talked to a majority of the residents in the block between Bucie and Carl, or Bucie and Orchard, and the majority of the residents feel the same way, that road should be left as it is, but fixed.
Yes, and again, I'd like to reiterate the thank you to the Public Works Department in involving us and letting us speak to this issue. But it's clear that their hands are tied, and the only people that can untie them are really you all in finding some dollars to make this necessary repairs to the road. It's no secret that Florida Avenue is a major portal into Urbana, and you have a number of people, both celebrities and high donors, who visit my neighbor across the street in the president's house on a regular basis. I think it's less than a Band-Aid approach to take away the parking and devalue our properties in doing that, and also make it impossible to really have, to be able to use our houses as they were intended, homes that you invite people into. I look at Keith and his children, he has two small children, and it's lovely to see children in the neighborhood, again, having birthday parties in the backyard. I don't know how they're able to do that. Certainly, they can't. I wouldn't want any child to cross Florida Avenue if parking were moved to the south side of the street, and certainly to be able to go around the block. I'm sure the residents on Delaware wouldn't be all too happy with that either, since there's a number of folks parking on the street on Delaware as well. I ask you to consider finding those dollars to make the repairs to the street that need to be done and get that done expediently.
Okay, thank you very much. Itai Segav, have I pronounced your name properly?
You did remarkably well.
Okay. How do you pronounce your name?
My name is Itai Segav.
Oh.
And I live at 410 West Florida, and I am coming in as a slightly less angry version of the previous two speakers. I also want to thank the Public, the Traffic Commission that I've attended the last two meetings of and for listening to us. And I strongly believe that the, there's, you know, the reason we have a professional level is to listen to them. So if, you know, they seem quite adamant that, you know, that this is something that's really necessary for, to maintain the condition of the road. And, you know, I certainly don't have the expertise to overrule that. On the other hand, you know, my wife and I both have cars, which, and a one-lane driveway. And in fact, I've been trying to expand it for a couple of years now, and I've been told by the folks over there in that office that I can't because of 25 feet and blah, blah, blah. And up till now, that's mainly been just a nuisance, because if for some reason the wrong car is in the garage, it's a one-person operation to just slide the car that's on the driveway into the parking on the street and then get the other car. But if there's no parking on the street, that's clearly not possible. Also, you know, if I can park on the street and leave the driveway free, so if somebody stops by and they don't have a, I mean, there are the parking permits, but it's easier if people can just slide into the driveway and, you know, drop by and not worrying about the parking restrictions if they're guests. And so in my ideal world, you will magically make money appear and just fix the road without making the parking go away. Between the various alternatives of moving parking to the south side and no parking, I agree that no parking is better, so we have that little buffer so we can safely pull out of our driveways and not be, and see the traffic. That's quite hard to see as it is. And finally, I would like to say that if you go ahead and remove the parking, that I hope you will also look favorably on my application for a variance so I can get that slightly expanded driveway so that one car no longer has to block the other, and we can have guests drop by while we're both home. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Spencer Hayteri, did you want to talk?
Hi, just a quick update from the Senate. So a couple of meetings ago, I brought up the issue of lighting, and I wanted to put it on your guys' radar that the Senate is in the process of formulating events in order to raise awareness for a lot of safety, especially to the point that Mayor Pressing brought up about wearing light and reflective clothing. So we have some ideas going around for that. If you have any input or want to work together with us. I know that Urbana, you guys brought up that you have bike lights that you provide. So maybe having a booth there where we provide lights for bikes for people as well. Other than that, the Senate wanted me to ask you if there's anything that you guys are doing right now to kind of investigate a lot of the lighting issues around campus.
Well, I did drive on that part of Lincoln Avenue, and I found it to be very dark, too. I talked to Bill Gray about it. So I don't know what the problem is, but it seemed like it was easier to see with the yellow lights than the lights that are at that part. It was kind of scary to drive it at night. You couldn't really see pedestrians. Anybody have any questions or comments? Well, thank you for keeping us in touch with the Student Senate.
Thank you.
Okay, Eric Jacobson?
Yeah, anything, I'm just going to reinforce one thing. Anything that you can do to encourage people to wear light or preferably even reflective coating, you know, clothes, would just be terrific. I mean, it just scares me to death that someday I'm going to hit someone at night who's wearing dark clothes because I just didn't see the person.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood are still concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems, but they do not wish to testify. Is that correct? Okay. All right, is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, we'll move on. We have unfinished business, I don't think there's any that we're going to deal with tonight. Reports of standing committees. Diane?
Can I, I had a question first. Is the special meeting canceled?
No, we're going to have that at the end. Actually, there's no real need for a special meeting. We won't do it this way in the future, but we will have a closed session at the end.
Okay.
So give people a chance to talk about the meatier part of the agenda.
Okay, just wondering. On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of Resolution Number 2015-11-060R, which is the resolution authorizing the city of Urbana to issue its revenue bond for the Clark Lindsey Village Project Series 2015 for the purpose of providing funds to finance the costs of a project for Clark Lindsey Village Incorporated, authorizing and approving certain documents in connection with the issuance of said bond, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the issuance of said bond. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
I think the first second came from Charlie, is that correct? Okay, we'll take turns. Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Do I vote on that, Madam Clerk? Okay. Oh, I got it in the wrong place. Mayor Pressing? Yes. Okay. That motion carries unanimously. Diane?
For Resolution Number 2015-11-061R, which is a resolution deeming certain funds in the Special Tax Allocation Fund for downtown Urbana Tax Increment Development Project area as surplus funds and directing payment and distribution thereof. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Ammons, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
For Resolution Number 2015-11-062R, which is a resolution determining the amounts of money necessary to be raised by the tax levy. For the committee, I move approval.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe, any discussion? Yes, Eric?
So I'm led to recall that last year I actually made a promise, which I think I am obliged to keep, and I think it's the right thing to do anyway, not to vote for any reduction in contributions to the pension funds for police and firefighters. And I've, you know, I've talked with Mayor and our Finance Chief, and I've done some thinking and some reading about it myself. And the only, it just comes down to me to the fact that since investments in the pension funds will be, will appreciate faster than inflation on the average, that it's pay now or pay more later. And I just don't want to go that slippery slope. So I will not, I will vote no on the present amounts as they are. If anyone will second it, I will introduce an amendment to raise the contributions to the police and fire funds to the level we put in last year.
There's no second to that amendment, so we'll vote on the original motion. Anybody else want to comment? Mike Madigan?
So I completely understand where Eric is coming from. However, when we look at police and fire pension funds relative to those around the state, we are in exceptional shape. And I think that this approach is better than raising taxes on the taxpayers and getting us even that much further out of whack with Champaign in terms of property tax. I certainly would not support this as a long-term approach, but my fear is if we continue to raise taxes to fund the pensions at the current level, then we'll end up with less taxpayers, and that whole scenario could just feed on itself. So while I am supportive of the mayor's efforts to balance this issue with less, a bit less funding for the pensions, I still cannot be supportive because the actual tax rate is increasing. And even though it's a small amount, it's still an increase, and I think we need to be figuring out ways to go the other direction to be more competitive with our neighbor.
Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
No.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes. That motion carries.
For Resolution Number 2015-11-063R, which is a resolution approving an agreement for federal participation with the Illinois Department of Transportation, Lincoln Avenue right-of-way acquisition. For the committee, I move approval.
Motion by?
Oh, sorry, I skipped one. Wait, go back to it.
Okay. We're on Item E?
Yes.
A motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Okay. Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Back to Item D, which is Ordinance Number 2015-11-110, which is an ordinance revising the fiscal year 2015-2016 annual budget to, for the human relations officer moving from half-time to full-time. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Jacobson, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Item F is Resolution Number 2015-11-064R, Resolution for Improvement by Municipality Under the Illinois Highway Code, Lincoln Avenue Improvement Right-of-Way Purchased with Motor Fuel Tax Funds. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Jacobson, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Okay, I'm going to move that we consider Items G, H, I, J, and K in omnibus fashion.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Jacobson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Did that require a roll call, Mr. Attorney? Okay. All right, so now we are on to an omnibus motion?
Omnibus motion for Resolutions Number 2015-11-065R, 066R, 067R, 068R, and 069R. And these all have to do with amendments to our agreement with the Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization between the, between us and Champaign County Neighborhood Alliance for Habitat. For the committee, I move approval.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance Number 2015-11-111, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 22, Article 6, Section 2290, which is an amendment to the food and beverage tax ordinance to clarify tax obligations for persons hiring Urbana-based caterers. For the committee, I move approval.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I wanted some clarification on what the difference between a caterer and a food service contractor is.
And they what?
And a food service contractor. It sounds like we want to apply the food and beverage tax to food service contractors. Is that what we're doing?
No, what we're trying to do is fix an ambiguity where persons outside of Urbana are contracting with caterers to provide services. The purchases are being made in Urbana, and the billing is coming from Urbana, and the service being provided is coming from Urbana, but the end-use is occurring outside of Urbana. So we're seeking to clarify that. For example, caterers may cater fraternities or sororities on an ongoing basis, not for a particular event, but for example, daily food service within their respective houses being supplied by the caterer, including their employee providing the service.
But the food itself could be shipped raw to the house, prepared at the house, prepared at the house, and we'd still charge the food and beverage tax on it?
Yes, and the reason is, is the taxes on the privilege of purchasing food, not on where it's made.
So what's the difference? So what's the difference between that and, say, a large contractor like Arimac? Arimark? Arimark, who's based in Philadelphia, providing food service to lots of, lots of?
I didn't hear the last part.
Like, a big contractor like Arimark, a food service contractor that provides dinners for nursing homes and jails and schools and private nursing homes, but they're based in Philadelphia. So would they be able to collect a tax?
They would not be required to.
They wouldn't be required to pay us, but we're saying if we can do it, then supposedly they could charge their Philadelphia tax on all the people that eat food here in Urbana.
I don't know what Philadelphia ordinance provides. This is the privilege of purchasing food in Urbana.
I think it's a, it sounds to me like it's a food service contractor tax, so I'm going to vote no.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
I'm with Bill, no.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Diane?
Ordinance Number 2015-11-112, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 2, Article 9, Sections 2, 171 through and including 2-176, and adding new Section 2-177 for compliance with new state statute concerning legal defense and indemnification for city employees and officials. State statutory bar for providing legal defense and indemnity for employees unlawful, criminal, intentional, willful, wanton, grossly negligent contact, conduct. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe, any discussion? Okay, Mr. Madigan?
So what does this do?
I will let Mr. Simon answer that.
The state of Illinois recently passed legislation which prohibits municipalities from indemnifying their employees and officials in connection with criminal conduct. This complies with the new state statute and broadens it to the situation where an employee engages in knowingly wrongful conduct. However, should the employee be exonerated of the criminal action or, you know, be found to not have engaged in any of this conduct other than possibly negligence, then they would be reimbursed for their costs and expenses, including attorney's fees.
Reimbursed by whom?
The city. We already have an ordinance on this. It's been on the books for a while.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Jacobson?
I'm a little conflicted on this, and maybe you can help me sort it out. Because on the one hand, obviously on the face of it, I don't want to provide resources for somebody who knowingly engaged in really bad conduct. On the other hand, we're talking about somebody who has alleged to have behaved in really bad conduct, and we're saying that we will not stand by that person with respect to legal representation for defending himself or herself. for defending himself or herself. I was in a position decades ago where I did the right thing. I'm completely convinced that I did the right thing, that I did something that was technically not covered in university statutes. And I was told by the dean that if I didn't, the then dean, that if I didn't, you know, change course and do something that I felt was wrong, that the university would not defend me. It had to do with, I'll, I'll tell you exactly what it had to do with. It had to do with a person who, it was, had to do with a student who had cheated on a test.
It had to do with what?
A person who had cheated on an exam in a course that I was teaching.
Okay.
And cheated in such a way that I suspected all of the exams that had been taken during the course. So I said that what I would do is base her grade for the course on the final exam. And she earned a pretty bad grade. She didn't fail, but she earned a bad grade. And then her parents said they were going to sue the university, because there was no provision, no explicit provision for what I had done in the, in the university regulations. And I was told, I was on my own, unless I reversed myself. So I'm a little sensitive to this issue. And I guess I'd like to be convinced that, 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 that this is really the right thing for us to do.
Excuse me, in part, we have no choice, because state law, as I indicated, was recently, state statute amendment to Illinois Municipal Code was adopted concerning criminal conduct. Now, I'm not sure the conduct you're describing, regardless of whether you were right or wrong and how you treated that student, amounts to criminal conduct.
No, it, yeah.
Obviously. Or intentional conduct with animus to hurt somebody, or injure somebody, or steal something. I don't think, it doesn't sound willful, wanton, or grossly negligent. You thought you were in the right.
Yeah.
The university didn't want to deal with the, obviously, political fallout of having given the student a grade that he or she may or may not have deserved.
Okay. I'll meditate on this for the next thirty-two seconds, or however long.
Do you want to vote last? Anyone else? Okay, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
A reluctant yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Reports of special committees. I don't think we have any about reports of officers. Is there anyone who wants to give a report? No, I guess not.
On what?
Whatever they want. They're officers. Do you want to give a report?
Sure, I want to give a report.
Okay, go for it.
The first report I would give is that I did attend the conference in Peoria with Chief Connolly. Diane, I believe, was there also. No, Diane, were you there?
For both days.
For both days, absolutely. Good job. She's trying to take shots at me there. I see that. But it was very informative. I was pleasantly surprised with some of the information that I found. I don't want to go into too much detail about it, but I do see the need that it be a different approach to, to policing and how we're addressing some of the concerns with the violent crimes, the shootings and things that we are experiencing in the community. But I still have a lot of questions about the process, but I did just want to give that report just quickly, that I was there. Diane was there. We had a tremendous showing from Champaign County, from the state's attorney and other officers in the city of Champaign, as well as other elected officials. So I just wanted to share that. And also, I have a, an announcement that was sent to me. I think all of you may have gotten it. If I can find it, disappeared somehow. I don't know where it said. I'll come back to it, I guess.
I would like to report on a meeting that was held last week by the community coalition. They showed the film Racial Taboo, which was excellent, and then we had discussion groups afterwards. And I think that these, some of the proposals that were done in Peoria could be discussed by this ongoing discussion. And I also talked with Grace Mitchell about having churches get together, maybe a black church and a white church talk, you know, have a joint meeting to discuss all these kinds of things, which is kind of like a reconciliation that went on in South Africa. You know, have different groups with a long history of problems, although I think we're working on our problems, but I think it really would be good to have a community-wide discussion and maybe do it, not only churches, but other kinds of community groups, to just reach across and talk to people about what the best solutions to these problems are.
Anyone else have a report?
I would also like to say that I had a gentleman praise us for the good work that we did on Broadway Avenue. He's very happy driving it now. It used to be very rough. He used to avoid it, but he's very pleased with the Public Works Department. So, thank you, Bill, and all your staff. Okay, we'll move on to-
Mayor?
Yes, Diane?
Just following up on the comments that you and Aaron had made. I just wanted to let the public know that the next regularly scheduled meeting of the community coalition will be held on Wednesday, December ninth. The public is always invited, and we always have a, we have a core group of people, but then there's always new people every month, so it's really wonderful to see the community joining this effort. And they're usually held at the Urbana or the Champaign Police Department conference rooms. But public is welcome to attend.
Okay, thank you. Bill Brown?
And I received some comments about the kind of messy job that's been done along Florida Avenue in installing the cable conduit for the most recent, the third, I think, instance of fiber optics going down that street. So a lot of people were upset about the procedures that the company has been using to install the optic system, and they've hit some sewer lines. Of course, they're paying for repairs and everything, but it's a big inconvenience. So I think we need to look at how we permit that. I know that we don't have a lot of control over it, because a lot of it's regulated by the state. But if there's anything we can do permit-wise to have more oversight and control over how, what the quality of the job that's being done is, I think we should look closer at that.
Okay. We'll move on to new business. The first item is a staff appointment to have Alex Batista appointed to the human, as the human relations officer. I think he's done a fine job.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson. Mr. Ammons?
So I know there were some questions raised by one of my constituents at the last meeting, and since then, we've had several conversations. And I just wanted to see, just for the sake of understanding, I plan to support it. I think Alex is doing a tremendous job. But I do want to understand how this works when it comes to, from a policy standpoint. If you have an individual who is in a position part-time, is there a requirement to open that position back up before you offer that individual a full-time appointment or something? Or is that standard practice that the individual who's in the position, when they go full-time, it's just a simple transition?
There's no requirement to advertise. I think it would be kind of window dressing, because if you have somebody that's doing a really good job, you want to keep them. And if you tell them that they're just going to open it up after they've done a good job and convinced you that you need a full-time person, I think you'd be wasting everybody's time. It's very expensive to conduct, conduct a search. And we got a good person, so we want to keep him on the job. And it's different if you just have a survey and have people come in for interviews. You don't really have the, the experience with them that you do with somebody who's been on the job and done an outstanding job. So that's why I'm saying it wouldn't really be a fair, open kind of system, because you have one person that's already got the job. And normally, you don't kick somebody out, or, you know, put it up for bids if you're very satisfied with their work. Eric?
So the other thing I would add, and it's been alluded to, and it's perfectly true, that we are often in a sort of competitive situation with our sister city. And I am very sure, based on conversations that I have been party to, that Alex would be snapped up in a heartbeat if we don't nail him down.
Okay. All those in favor, please say, oh, is there a motion? There is a motion. It's by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson. Is there any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, ordinance number 2015-11-113, an ordinance revising the fiscal year 2015-2016 annual budget. And this is for the post-TIF III distribution. And we have our finance director, Elizabeth Hannan, here.
You will probably recall that at the end of June, we distributed $11.6 million in remaining funds from TIF III. And at the time, we indicated that we hadn't allocated all of our interest income for that fiscal year. So as part of wrapping up last fiscal year, we have allocated interest income and also into a few months of this year. And so now, we want to make the truly final distribution, which will be $157,055, $157,055.68. And in order to make that distribution, we need to amend the budget to provide for the expenditure. So that's what this would do.
Move the budget a moment.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes. That motion carries. Thank you. Ordinance number 2015-11-114, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets. Florida Avenue between Race Street and Bucy Avenue. Bill Gray, Public Works Director.
Thank you. We've had two Traffic Commission meetings. I have minutes in the packets and a report before you, but I thought, hearing the comments tonight, a little more history that isn't necessarily reflected in the memo is appropriate. Probably in 2012, 2013, we knew that the Florida Avenue condition of the street was, was in some cases failing in that eastbound lane. And we were internally discussing this very motion of moving parking on the south side, or, or some fashion thereof. As it turned out, there was a recommendation for no parking at all. But we thought, with our own crews who would come through in 2013, the fall was kind of late in the year. It was a pretty intense project for our crews to do, closing the street down and bypassing and detouring around. But we did a patch, and if you look at all the material, labor, equipment expenses, or if it was done by contract, it was probably about $100,000 worth of patches that we did. We thought, ah, this should hold us over for five or more years. Hopefully, we'd get this in the CIP, and life is good. We don't have to mess with parking, you know, case closed. Well, it wasn't, you know, two winters later, and the balance of that eastbound traffic has fallen apart. And we're kind of back to where we were in 2012, 2013. So that's the reason why we went to the Traffic Commission, because we're, quite frankly, trying to buy time. If we're to patch the rest of that eastbound traffic, it's going to be at least up to about $200,000. And I'll be honest with you, it's, it's, I don't want to, hate to use the word "throwaway", but it's $200,000 in patching to keep the pavement, to keep the roadway serviceable, knowing that the road really needs to be reconstructed. And I don't have a cost for you tonight, but it's probably safe to say it'd be, you know, a multimillion-dollar type of reconstruction project. So I'm trying to buy time and thinking of how best to do that. Initially thought, staff thought that we know parking is, is good to have, nice to have. I know the driveways are single driveways, not a lot of off-street parking available. And we thought on the south side, but in the first meeting we had, we heard good comments why that wasn't a good, a good reason. You know, one was, well, you're parking across a busy street. We have other busy streets in town with parking, but albeit, that's a legitimate comment. There's no sidewalks on the south side. So if you park across the street in your mid-block, you're walking on grass, or, or you try to walk across the street. And then probably the most telling comment that our engineer went out to verify, to confirm, is, is as you back out of these driveways, it is a lovely street, has a lot of lovely stately trees, big trees, two, three, four-foot diameter trees, and it's tough to see westbound traffic. And with the parking on the north side, you can push the nose of your car past the tree to see that westbound traffic. If park, if cars are, are westbound on the north curb line, you know, you don't have that luxury, in a way. It's, it's less safe. So that meeting, and then the second meeting, we thought, well, we can go with no parking both sides. We would probably create two 11-foot lanes, travel lanes centered on the center of the pavement, and then more or less five feet off the north curb line, five feet off the south curb line would be striped in a way that wouldn't allow parking and wouldn't be a bike lane either. It would just be a no, excuse the expression, I guess, but no man's land, if you will, not to drive on, but it was where the, the pavement was not in good shape. Tonight, you heard compelling reasons why they don't like the no parking idea. They don't want parking on the south side. They don't want to park on Delaware. I understand that. I, I get those concerns. But I just want you to know that, you know, we don't have, and I don't know what the number is, but to say, we don't have $2 million in the bank to do this project next year. In fact, the $2 million, 2.1 to be exact, is in the bank, what we're doing on Green Street. We're going to rebuild Green, as you know, between Race and Wright. So that's our focus for our dollars. Obviously, we're finishing up, you know, Windsor Road, which is a $6 million project. So these are big, big cost projects, and I'm trying to stretch a dollar in Florida. I, I hate, I don't know if you want to take it back to Traffic Commission or whatever. I don't know what more to tell you other than I think the recommendation, no parking from the commission, was a sound recommendation. I agree. There is no parking. You're going to have to park on a side street, a north-south street, which is, in some cases, those are kind of long blocks. There are two-block-long stretches there. Other areas of town, the blocks are a little bit shorter, but between Bucy and Orchard and Race, those are long stretches. So that's, that's what we're faced with. So the recommendation is no parking at all. And the reason why we're kind of pushing it quickly is if the council decision is affirmative, then we are putting into motion some, a contract we have for striping. We've already done some striping in town. That contractor would be available in the next two weeks. If we get a 40-degree day or whatever, we can get him out there to do the striping work before the snow, or hopefully, before the snow flies. But otherwise, I, I don't have, the only other solution is, you know, we, we, in the next year or two, find $200,000 and patch the rest of that eastbound lane. And I can't tell you, a patch, you know, may give us five years to 10 years at the most. We'll still be back, you know, have, trying to fix the road, but at least parking would be maintained on the street. So I guess that's your other option to consider.
Could I ask, when do you think this road could be reconstructed? Is it on the schedule?
It's not even in the capital improvement plan. So what I mean by that, it's not planned for the next five years. Now, we're going to look at, you know, how soon can it be in the, in the next capital improvement plan, you know, presentation. It was actually, it's been on our radar screen, but it's just, Green Street, because of the federal grant we received, we, we had to make our commitment for our share for that project. So it and Green were kind of vying for the next big project.
I know that Race Street had, in front of the high school, had to wait for quite a long time. And, and Vine Street has a lot of bumpy parts to it, too, so. Okay, Bill?
It seems like because of its proximity to the university and Orchard Downs, it could have qualified for maybe some of that MCOR money. Is that something you looked at when you were putting together the MCOR proposal?
Well, the MCOR project was driven by transit, to be honest with you. And the complete street nature of improving the transit routing and scheduling and bus stops, along with a safer way to accommodate bicyclists in, in that- along with a safer way to accommodate bicyclists in, in that corridor. Um, so, and it, it's involved the Champs, City of Champaign, the University of Illinois, and MTD. Um, we wouldn't, I doubt MTD, we wouldn't get those other, um, partners, if you will, for Florida Avenue. So, for Tiger Grant money, that was unique for maybe a transit-driven project, and we applied four times for that money.
I mean, I know, I know there's bus routes there, and there's a missing bike lane there that's in the, in the U of I bike plan, but not in our bike plan, or vice versa. There, there's something along there that's supposed to be a bike lane, so it seems like it potentially could have applied. So, I guess my other question would be related to that?
If I could finish, just one second.
Okay, sorry.
It is eligible for federal dollars, though. So, Surface Transportation Program money, it is eligible for. The problem is, is that's money, th- those are programs that are routed through COATs. And, you know, COATs, historically, those projects have been, you know, more or less reconstructed, new roadways in, in the fringe areas, more or less, Olympian Drive, Curtis Road, Windsor Road, those sorts of situations. Are, are, are the usual types of projects like that. Once Olympian Drive is completed, North Lincoln Avenue is federal dollars, that's next in line. The next in line project then is Prospect and Champaign, in Savoy, between Windsor and Curtis. So, the, the federal STU money, and assuming we have a highway bill that considers to fund it, you know, that's booked for the next five years. So, that, it is eligible for S- uh, STU federal dollars.
If some of those projects come in under budget, would there be money available then to put toward Florida Avenue?
Well, the other factor is, is that projects are prioritized. And I don't know where it would stack up amongst all the other projects to be prioritized. I would say, outside of city dollars, the greatest opportunity is talking to our state representatives. I think if there is a budget that's ever passed, it's my understanding that there would probably be a public works capital bill of some kind in the offing. And we were extremely successful with Illinois Jobs Now money that helped us build, like Olympian Drive, East End West and Champaign, High Cross Road. I mean, those dollars hugely benefited Champaign-Urbana, uh, in big projects. So, that would be, um, my ask is, if those public works capital dollars statewide were available, and then next bill, you know, however it's funded, as we know, video gaming and, and other things, um, you know, funded the IGN money.
I think you did say that the, um, the stoplight at Orchard Downs would be the responsibility of the university, is that right?
Correct.
I mean, at Orchard Street?
If we rebuilt it, that traffic signal would have to be rebuilt to meet today's modern standards. And by agreement, that's 100% expense of the University of Illinois.
Okay, Charlie?
Yeah, Bill, what, I'd like to explore some more of the, uh, the idea of, of patching it, um, short-term. Do you think there's a couple hundred thousand dollars' worth of patching that needs to be done? Does that patching need to start now, um, to say, to, to, to repair that south side, or can it wait till spring? Well, that's, I'm not sure about why the schedule is, why it is.
Well, the striping schedule is to leave the eastbound curb lane, if you will, as is, and push cars away from that eastbound, south side, if you will.
I mean, is it, is it an imminent danger of collapse?
Well, there's failed pavement out there, yes. I mean, it's, we're putting cold mix in, we're, um, you know, trying to keep it, you know, serviceable, but we know that winter's even harder than the normal, you know, year without the freeze thaw cycle. So, it's, i- it's in, it's in bad shape, and it's showing continued, um, you know, disrepair and potholes out there. So, to answer your question, can we do a patching now? Well, two reasons. One, we really don't have the money budgeted to do it. But secondly, and probably more importantly, is this is not the time of year to do patching. It's, the weather's too cold. So, it would, um, you'd have to do a budget amendment, and as soon as you do it, it would be, you know, April or May, or something like that, or else later in the summer.
And, and so, exploring that, uh, reconstruction would also follow roughly the same kind of schedule then? Reconstruction wouldn't start till next summer?
Reconstruction would be 2017 at the earliest.
Because of?
The time it takes to design a project.
Design and?
Yeah, at the earliest.
Okay, so, so basically, the recommendation is no parking until, at a minimum, 2017? Or we do... Are you saying that we probably need to keep cars off of this even for this winter and do patching in the spring?
Well...
If we could do the patching?
We're going to keep it as serviceable as we can, so the answer, I, I mean, we don't want to have to barricade it off, but, um, technically, we can't, because if we barricaded it off, we'd have to remove parking on our side, which is what we're talking about tonight. So, um, you know, our crews will do the best they can, and they will, to keep it serviceable. But I'm just saying, there'll be a lot of man-hours to, you know, put patching. We do have a, uh, this is a, good enough in a tangent, but we have a new, um, piece of armor, if you will, in our, uh, wintertime pothole patching, and that is what's called a hot box, or it's a, it's a device that heats the asphalt material. So, it comes out warm, and it can compact, and it's more durable and holds up longer. And this is, um, a, a new, um, piece of equipment we now have. So, the point is, that can help our patches last longer, especially during the winter timeframe. So, we will continue to patch it, to answer your question. If we do nothing, that's what we'll do.
Eric?
So, the concern of the, um, petitioners that, that really I most resonate with is simply the avail, losing of parking spaces. Uh, and so, in that context, is there any way that we, I don't want to preempt the, uh, Plan Commission, but is there some way that we can encourage, um, the granting of variances to, uh, homeowners who, who wish to expand their parking space?
Yeah, just to make one comment about parking. Parking is not heavily used on this area. For the last three weeks, we've gone by at nighttime, daytime, whatever. Um, on it, most of the time, we see two cars, one car or no car. The outlier is the Ohio State football game Saturday, whatever was going on, or it was a dozen cars. When I went to the game, I said, wow, I haven't seen that many cars parked in a while. But most of the time, yes, we would be inconveniencing some parkers, but it's not like a Broadway Avenue, north of the high school situation. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, to answer your question, we have Libby Tyler, Community Development Director.
So, the requirement is that we require, um, off-street parking to be on approved surfaces. And for single-family homes, we have some limited provision for accessory parking spaces to be added to the driveways. And, um, requirements are that they stay out of the front yard. So, in looking at this stretch of Florida Avenue, there are, um, narrow driveways, and homes are older, and actually adding, in some cases, adding the accessory parking spaces would pretty much pave half the front yard. I think it could really change the character of these homes, uh, to see a lot of the accessory parking added to the lots, because there's no longer the on-street parking. To answer your specific question, it's zoning ordinance. Um, we would, if we decided that we're going to allow parking and grass and, you know, just like they do out in some rural areas, then we would have to amend the ordinance to allow that through the Plan Commission.
So, at present, at present, uh, people would have to petition for a var... Is there, there is a procedure, though, to petition for a variance, to, to be able to, for example, pave more than one would ordinarily pave?
Yeah, if they want, in some cases, yeah, if they want to pave and their front yard isn't large enough to accommodate the widened driveway, um, they may need a variance to allow that driveway to be in the front yard. That's true. But it is a cost as well to do the pavement for the homeowners.
Yeah, it, yeah, clearly, it is a cost.
Right.
And, um, okay, but, so, it's...
It isn't, it's an option, and I think for the gentleman who spoke, that is an option.
Yeah, it's, it's not impossible. But it's, but it, but it is... Yeah, you have to, there is a little bit of persuasion needed, yeah, okay.
Right.
Thank you. Oh, Diane?
Going back to our main topic of discussion here, um, if, if we were to follow the recommendation of the Traffic Commission and remove parking, I'm not clear on what happens to the deteriorated pavement in the south side in the, in the eastbound lanes. I mean, there are places where it just undulates. So, what's, what's the plan for that?
Well, again, we would make it just safe, serviceable. It's not intended necessarily to take all the traffic. We would push, through the striping, we would push cars five feet away from that south curb. So, you would be driving, split the pavement in half. So, you'd have 11-foot lane eastbound from the center line, south 11 feet for westbound. You go 11 feet from the center line, north. So, I've, I mean, I've driven it with not, no cars along, and if you hug the center line of the road, you know, it, it drives reasonably well, uh, in that case. And I guess the next question is, well, what's to say that part won't deteriorate too? It may, but right now, it's in reasonably decent shape, and it's service, it's certainly a smoother ride than the lane. So, to answer your question, the striping of a solid white line would tell the motorists, the driver, not to drive in that area, to stick in the lane, stay in the lane.
So, when you talk about a $200,000 in patching, what are you, what, what are we referring to?
What we're referring to is essentially the south, the areas that weren't recently patched, patching the rest of that. It's about a six-foot-wide band strip hugging the south curb all the way between Bucie and essentially Race.
But people won't be driving on that?
Well, no, when the patching's done, they would be driving on it, yes. If, if we want to patch the road, we leave parking where it is, and, and the cars will drive the road like it happens today. It's just that all the potholes and failed pavement are removed and replaced with a concrete patch.
Okay.
Is that not?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just not seeing the light at the end of the tunnel here, though.
Well, no, I...
If I thought this road was going to be improved within, it's not even in the five-year capital improvement plan at this point, so... So, it's just not clear to me where to go on this one.
Well, what I'm saying is, is that, yeah, whether we do the no parking or we do the patching, it's probably going to buy us enough time to accumulate the dollars to rebuild Florida. But I, that's multiple years away.
Charlie?
Yeah, it strikes me that we, we need a plan, um, before we change the, the striping. And we either need to commit to making this temporary through the winter and doing the patching in the spring, or making this temporary and having it last 18 months, plus construction, and reconstruct the road in 2017. And, um...
That's the $2 million?
Yeah, that's a $2 million project. And so, my question for that...
Don't even, just say multimillion. I don't know what the number is, so, I...
That's a multimillion, yeah, my, my sentiment there is, is that I really would like to know, uh, whether it's feasible to, uh, to do a bonding for Florida, as we have done for, for Windsor Road. Uh, in fact, uh, when Windsor Road came up, I remember asking, you know, why don't we bond for all of the critical roads that we have in the community that are left, you know, above and beyond Windsor? Uh, maybe that's a discussion that we need to have, uh, possibly in committee next week. Identify that, that core set of, of roads and intersections. Bond for it and just bite the bullet. I can think of, um, a number of intersections that are in pretty bad shape. Uh, they're, they're almost impossible to bicycle, and, and you better have really good shocks on your car to go through them, so... That's how I feel about it. I, I really feel very torn about this.
I would point out that we did get money from the state for Windsor Road. It wasn't just all our bonding.
Yeah, we got half, right, exactly. And I, I'd love to see us in that kind of a situation.
Well, we, we have a huge deficit, uh, huge capital needs, without the money to meet those needs, and we try to do the best we can, but we can't do it all at once. Eric?
So, I, I agree with Charlie that we need a plan. And I would suggest, maybe, that the, the procedure for doing the plan is that we ought to review our five-year capital plan and see if it, if the priorities that are reflected in that are what we still want, or where this reconstruction would fit. And I guess I would also suggest, we, we sometimes take bus trips as a council. So, I would suggest, maybe, taking it, I would suggest, uh, I would suggest a, a bus trip across all of the, uh, all of the places that, that are really problem spots. And that this might, you know, where we could make stops, we could walk around, and we could feel the, the shocks. And, uh, that might help us to do the, uh, the prioritization. Um, I do intend to, um, based on what I've heard so far, I, I do intend to, uh, uh, support this with, um, uh, the proposal that is, uh, before us. And, uh, but I, but I do want, uh, I do want everybody, the residents on Florida Avenue and everybody, to be able to, I don't know how long the tunnel is, but I want them to be able to have some idea of how long it is, and some confidence that there is light at the other end.
Did you make a motion, Mr. Jacobson?
Oh, yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll move, I'll, I'll move passage.
Is there a second? There's no second?
Yeah, a second.
Okay, second by Bill Brown. Discussion? Bill?
I, I just think this is probably the least objectionable, uh, solution for, right now, to have the five-foot buffer on each side. So, there's a little bit of space that, um, you can back out a little bit. You won't have the eight feet or nine feet the park car would give you. What is it? Nine feet, something like that? Eight or nine, so, but at least it's better than having the, the bus right next to the curb. But, um, this is, you know, a temporary solution. We need to find the money to rebuild the road. And I have heard from other, um, member, other residents on Florida who supported no parking on Florida. I have heard from residents on Delaware who are worried about people parking on Delaware. And I understand that, because the couple of times I've gone to things at the President's House, I usually park on Delaware, because it's easier to get out, and that's, that's a convenient place to park. But Delaware is also not a real heavily-used parking, uh, street for parking. So, um, you know, I think this is probably the best we can do right now, to provide a safe road for people to drive on.
Eric?
So, I, I'm having trouble with this because of, I mean, people are saying they, they won't have any place to park, right, or... But, so just dealing with that particular issue first. The residents who live there have single driveways, and so they'll have someplace to park the vehicles. But it'll be inconvenient, as many of them alluded to, that if there's two cars, somebody's got to get out and, and all that kind of stuff, to make room for the, for the other car to get out. And what I'm hearing from you is that there is, is there a, any sort of firm idea or firm date that parking would come back? Or is it just gone? What, what are you saying?
Well, that's a, a good question, because embedded in the ordinance is, this is a temporary no-parking measure, and the residents that spoke at the commission meetings wanted to make that very clear, that this isn't some ruse to remove parking permanently, which it isn't, okay? So, um, again, the parking would return when we made the road, you know, rebuilt. You know, rebuilt rule, but I don't have a date as to when that would be. So, it would be, you know, multiple years from now. But I, I, I can't answer when that is, whether it's, I, I, if it's a reconstruction, quite honestly, we're going to look at it from a capital improvement plan standpoint, and even from a bonding standpoint, I don't know that it would happen sooner than three years, to be honest with you.
And if we allow...
And, and it may be as many as five years or more. So, that's, that's the window of probability as to when this would happen, of no parking, if that's, if that's what passes tonight.
How many actual parking, uh, spots are we talking about?
Oh, I, you know what, Craig would probably know that number, I don't. But I know that the number of parking is typically, like I said, one or two on any given time of day and night. It's, it's very limited, um, but it's, yeah, I would say it's at least 20 or more spaces.
And if parking was to continue, on this... And if parking was to continue on this street, can you just sort of paint a picture for us? What's going to, what's going to happen to the street as it currently, in its current condition right now? You're saying that in a year, in two years, it'll, we won't be able to drive on it at all?
Well, we'll have to patch it. I mean, which is what we did in 2013. It was in such terrible shape that we had, we were to the point where we had to patch it, and we're almost to that point now.
So, and when we determine priorities of a capital improvement and stuff like that, or trying to, to fix our roads, what are some of the things that are considered there? To, to determine that this is the area that we need to work on first, second, or third?
Well, there's, you know, citywide, there's a pavement condition index that's done by staff and put together. And, and, you know, this road is, is near the top, if you will, of a road that needs serious, you know, work done to it, as does Green, and as does West Springfield, and as does Lincoln Avenue, and the list goes on and on, you know? And we did patching this year on Bradley and Goodwin and Bezlin, for example. So, there's patching demands all over the city, okay? And we use the dollars as best we can, but-
But are we asking other individuals to give up parking for that patching?
No, this is a highly unusual circumstance. But it was trying to not spend $200,000 and to, if you will, put that toward the best solution, which is rebuilding the road.
Which you're saying won't happen for about three to five years?
Correct.
Diane?
Is there restricted parking on Carl and Orchard? Is that all permit parking, like?
The whole area from Florida North to Green or whatever is restricted. It's permit parking, yes.
Is there a way to, if we pass this, to give Florida Avenue residents a waiver? And, and so that they could use the, use, park in the restricted zones?
According to our records, there is one permit holder for the 3:00 a.m. overnight parking in the whole stretch of Florida. And there's maybe a handful that have the daytime permit parking only. So, I mean, that's a council decision. It's 150 or whatever dollars a year, I forget what the number is. But there aren't that many permit holders, to be honest with you. But there are some.
But for a person who has a guest visiting them on Florida Avenue now, do they have to have a daytime permit to park on the street?
Yes.
So, that could be used around the corner on the other street?
Oh, yes, yes.
And the, they have to buy, or they could get the visitors' passes, which are, aren't they free? Are these still free? Okay.
Three dollars, or?
Okay.
Anyone else?
Just to follow up, Diane, so you, you're proposing that we offer a waiver to all the residents on Florida in that stretch, that they would be able to park on those side streets as opposed to having to go to Delaware?
Well, it sounds like they can anyway.
Whether, if they come in and get the pass and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
No, well, but the residents can, the residents are eligible for, for these passes because they live in the zone that the passes apply to. Just like every other resident in, in southwest Urbana.
If I could clarify that.
Charlie?
Yeah, the residents can get a pass to park on the street during the, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The daytime is free. If you want to be able to park your car overnight, though, you have to pay the $150 fee to, to park overnight. So, I don't know if, if that offering, that a waiver on those would, would help alleviate some of the problems or not. I, I see shaking of heads of no there, but that's only three residents out of a potential twenty-some that would need to be polled. Again, I, you know, this is a short-term solution that looks like it's going to, got a three- to five-year window, which is not exactly short-term in my view. I really would like us to commit to, be able to commit to saying we're going to patch it, you know, next year at $200,000, or we're going to, you know, start reconstruction in 2017. That's my own sentiment.
Diane?
I can't believe I'm saying this, but I, I, I'm leaning toward, I think we should patch this street because, because of its location. Everybody who goes to East Urbana or South Urbana drives on Florida Avenue. I drive on it multiple times every day. It's a very visible street. It goes past the President's House, for heaven's sakes, and, and it's an embarrassment in terms of its conditions. So, I, I favor patching it, plus putting it in the CIP to, to rebuild if we possibly can. I think we need to move it up on, in, in our scheme, on our priority list. So, I, I, I favor, I think I'm leaning toward patching.
Bill Brown?
So, just for clarification, if we can get the money to patch, would we, we wouldn't be able to do that till next spring, right? Because it's too late to pour concrete now?
Correct.
So, would we still want to pass this? Are you, would you still ask us to pass this for the striping this fall to carry us through the patch period?
No, no. If the council's wishes is to patch, patch it, and again, it's going to be up to $200,000, we would not remove parking. We would, you know, make it as safe as we can over the winter and schedule for next, next year.
Aaron?
So, the $200,000 that it would take to, to patch this, from your estimation, is that going to be taken away from some other area that needs to be patched? Is that what we're going to end up doing?
I'd like not to answer that question tonight, because I really need to talk to my staff. I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, I kind of like the, the strip on Florida, but, you know, maybe I'm, okay, I'll just be quiet.
Charlie, and then Eric?
I'd, I'd really like to give Bill some time to explore this. I really, and I think we should just send this to committee and take it up next week. And I, I don't know if that's enough time to get some numbers and look at some scenarios, and have our finance director help run some numbers and, and do the best job we can to, to figure out what our options are. It might be that, you know, $200,000 is, we might be able to come up with it, or it might be, you know, throwing away money that, that would be better used and do reconstruction in 2017, if we can figure out how to do it, you know, so.
We don't have a meeting next week. We would meet in December.
Right.
So, if you want to either-
We need to have a township budget committee meeting next week.
Well, I sent out the questionnaire.
Yeah, I just realized, yeah, we, we need to have-
We could, we could do the township budget meeting in December, right?
Uh, when's the last chance to pass the levy for the township budget?
We do it on the 14th for the levies. Okay, Elizabeth Hannan is going to answer that question.
I, I'm going to answer this in a general way, because I, I don't recall if you've approved an estimated tax levy. But you're required by law to approve an estimated tax levy, and then approve a final tax levy in December. So, if we're hung up on the estimated levy, yes, that does need to happen.
Mr. Jacobson?
November 30th is still November.
Next Monday is the 23rd.
That's right. But, but what I'm saying, what I, if I understand what Elizabeth is saying, the, we have, we need to pass the estimated levy before December 1st.
Um, there has to be, I'm, I'm doing this off the top of my head, but there has to be no more than 20 days between the time you pass the estimated levy and the time you pass the final levy, which with the holidays in December, might be difficult to do.
Okay. Well, fine with me to have a meeting next week.
Okay, we have a motion on ordinance number 2015-11-114 by Jacobson, seconded by Brown. And that is on the parking on Florida. So, how do you want to proceed? Mr., did you want to say something, Mr. Jacobson?
I just want to say one more thing.
Okay.
The $200,000 for patching this will come out of something else that we want to do. And at $200,000, these are pretty expensive parking spaces.
Everybody is deep in thought. Anybody want to say anything else?
Let's, let's, let's do it.
Mr., Mr. Gray?
Yeah, I, this is just, so, whatever your, the vote is, again, why we tried to rush it from the Traffic Commission to a council meeting, is we go to a committee meeting first, is there's that window weather-wise. And if we don't want to do the striping, if we do want to do the striping, we really need the no tonight. I hate to put it that way, because if we take the next meeting, which is the first Monday in December, as a vote, we just might lose that opportunity, and we wait until the next spring. Not that we couldn't do it if that's still the vote, but I was trying to hope to put cars, not driving in that outside lane eastbound over the winter, but that's just the way it happens, so.
Is the $200,000, that can't be spent this fall anyway, right?
Correct, right.
Okay, so, the only time you can spend the $200,000 would be, the earliest would be next spring? So, there's no point in putting this off?
Yeah, I, I didn't come tonight prepared to really talk about a $200,000 or patch project. So, I really need to talk to my staff and let you know better as to when that could happen. There's lots of things in the queue for next year already, and this wasn't one of them, as far as a patching project.
All right. Charlie's having a conference with the clerk. All right, we have a motion by Jacobson, seconded by Brown. Is there anyone who else wants to comment on this? Would the clerk please call the roll? The motion is to approve ordinance number 2015, which is to put this prohibiting the parking, and it's temporary, and we can discuss about putting this whole project on the capital plan. And, no, but we can't do that this fall anyway. So, the question is, do you want to follow through on this proposal, which would allow better driving on the street by eliminating parking? Mr. Emmons?
So, I, I actually would like to, I know, Bill, you said you've rushed this through, sort of to get here, to try to make a decision. And I, I feel like this is an opportunity for the residents, especially those on Florida, to participate in offering some probable or feasible solution, because it doesn't seem that it's going to, in the long term, be in the best interest of the residents or of the city to, to let this street deteriorate, right? And it's certainly with the financial concerns that we have right now, there's, something has to be done immediately. Either we're going to let the parking stay there, and it's going to further deteriorate the street, which will make the cost of patching or whatever more expensive, or we're going to find a way, kind of what Diane proposed, to try to do something on the side. But some, there's got to be some sort of compromise here at some point. And I actually would like to hear from the residents if they have an idea of what a compromise would be.
Mr. Manigan?
Okay, so, really, in, in partial answer to that, really what's before us tonight is whether or not we're going to restripe the road to use the road that is in better condition over the winter. That necessitates removing parking. A really tough thing for the folks who live along there, I understand that. But the only decision before us tonight is about whether or not to restripe the road to use the better portion of the road for driving over the winter. The rest of this, we need to hash out, but that really is the issue. Do we want to move the traveling lanes of the road to the pavement that is still in goo, in good, in decent condition, as opposed to the washboard that we have going on on the south?
Okay, let's not have any comments from the audience at this point. Mr. Manigan, you want to finish?
So, yeah, just, just to wrap up, it, the absolute intent, and, and this was not frankly rushed through the, the Traffic Commission. I think what Bill was trying to say is he needs to get a decision because of weather. But this was heard over two months of Traffic Commission meetings, and we did that because we wanted to hear from the residents. And we wanted to leave no stone unturned about what the alternatives are here. But I would 100% agree with Charlie, Diane, Bill, others here, everyone here who wants to look at reprioritizing the capital plan to make this a priority. This is a very important street in Urbana, and I think we need to take a good, hard look at that. But the question before us right now, whether you're for it or you're not, is do we move the lanes of traffic on that road and eliminate parking for the winter?
Aaron?
And so, thank you. But I, what I'm getting at is that my vote would be influenced by the amount of time, for instance, that the residents would be inconvenienced for the parking. If you're telling me that they're not, they're going to have to be inconvenienced and not be able to park in front of their own homes or whatever, and guests to park in front of their own homes, and have to walk around a block to get to the house for two or three years, then I'm not going to support it. If you tell me that it's going to be till next spring or something like that, then that could be, then I probably would support something like that. But I'm not going to, I, I couldn't see myself voting and saying somebody's going to be out of parking for two or three years. I wouldn't vote for that, for me, so why would I vote against somebody else like that?
Can I?
Mr. Manigan?
So, okay, totally understand what you're saying. So, then that means that the, the immediate fix to the road is a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of patching. And then, does that mean, because we do that, then we don't, we keep, we keep it out of the capital plan for another X number of years for a major reconstruct, because we've spent the $200,000 on the, on the patch? Or do we try for, you know, the whole, the, the bigger project and not spend the $200,000 there, but try to get maybe some state help? Or I don't know if federal help's available, but maybe some state help to reconstruct, entirely reconstruct that? So, there's a, there's a trade-off there, is all I'm saying. I can't say that I support one or the other.
Mr. Manigan, clarification, the $200,000 cannot be spent now, correct?
I'm talking about in the spring.
Okay.
So, that would be the most immediate fix, would be a couple hundred thousand dollar patch in the spring to then put the parking back into play and restripe the road back to its original state. But that still doesn't address the overall condition of the road. And as, as Bill Gray has said, the road is failing. So, a patch is, is still temporary.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yeah, just a clarification. I, I think I understand the timeline. If we approve this motion, the road will be restriped, parking will be removed from both sides, at least through the winter. And if we don't approve this, then there will be, then people will be driving over the roughest part of the road all winter. And so, that's the immediate, that's the immediate thing. We can revisit the issue in the spring. We can revisit the issue in the spring, informed by how badly the road actually suffered during the freezing and thawing cycles of the winter.
Would you like to amend your motion, so that it says that we will revisit this in the spring? Is that okay with the-
I would, I would, that would, I would consider that to be a, a friendly amendment, because there's no, I don't think there's anything in the motion that precludes us revisiting it in the spring.
Right, just, just to make it clear. And Mr. Brown is nodding his head. Mr. Smythe?
Yeah, I think it's further than that, though, that, you know, even if we revisit it in the spring to see what's, what's happened, we, in the meantime, have to plan for the reconstruction of the road ultimately, and whether or not we're going to patch it in the intermediate. And that needs to start sooner as opposed to later.
Yeah, I agree with that completely, but I think that that consideration needs to be done in the context of the competing claims on our resources.
There's one last question for me.
Okay.
Bill, if we, if we did the reconstruction and just redid the entire, that's her, entire street and area, how long would it take?
The actual reconstruction? Probably close to a whole construction season, May through November 1st or something.
Just, okay. So, there's going to be a, an extended period of no parking on that street at some point, even if it's for the reconstruction?
Well, during construction, but I think people understand that, you know, when there's construction going on. And then it's just a, then you get into the details of total closure, or, you know, a couple block closure- total closure, or, you know, a couple block closure at a time, and those things have to be worked out. Broadway, for example, was closed a couple blocks at a time, you know, and still tried to keep people in their driveways, that sort of thing, but.
I guess it just, it dawns on me that either way it goes, though, the guest or whoever may be visiting, even if it's total reconstruction, you're still going to have to park someplace else. You're not going to be able to park on Florida, right?
I think people typically understand that part. I mean, they, yeah, right. That's, that's a little bit different than what we're asking here.
Oh, boy, okay.
Okay, we do have a motion, and, um, I guess it's been somewhat perhaps revised. So, does everybody understand the motion?
No.
Okay, it's to, um, approve this ordinance with the provision that we study the longer-term implications of when is this road is going to be reconstructed or patched or whatever in the spring. Or, right now, but we resolve it by the spring, yes?
This ordinance doesn't say that the striping is going to be just through the winter and things are going to change, so, I mean, this, this ordinance is.
It doesn't talk about how long the striping is. It says that consideration should be for the long-term discussion of where this whole project fits in. It's not to say the striping only lasts for a certain time. But to speed up the consideration.
Okay, so if this passes tonight, we'll still present a capital improvement plan respectful of trying to reconstruct this road and come up with that best scenario. Council can still make a decision of spending $200,000 to patch it, to put the parking back the way it was, and that could happen as soon as next summer or whatever. So, is that kind of what I'm hearing? Okay.
Right. Mr. Manigan.
So, just one comment to that. I, I think what you've heard tonight here is there is, I think there is probably, uh, some support for considering bonding for this, and I would say that I would be, um, for one, would be supportive of looking at that. Uh, I think the, the market is still very favorable, uh, in terms of bonding. I know it's not ideal. We like to pay as we go, but this should be a priority, and, and I, I would agree with Charlie and, and others that, uh, we ought to consider that within the context of your assessment, and, and if we cannot, if we can accelerate the reconstruction by bonding.
I agree.
Diane.
And I just want to thank everyone for clarifying this for me. Thank you.
So, just, so I'm making sure I'm crystal clear. What we're going to vote on is that the striping will take place, and the parking will be removed until the spring, when we consider the patching and all that kind of stuff, right?
Assuming there's affirmative answer in the patching. If there isn't patching, just to be clear, it intends to be no parking indefinitely until we rebuild the road.
But there is a.
So it could be three years.
Strong push, whether it's bonding or whatever we have to do to, to get this road addressed because of its access to campus and the usage of the road. Okay, thank you.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons.
Um, no, yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Manigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe. That motion carries. Resolution number 2015 dash 11 dash 070R, a resolution approving a state fire marshal fire truck revolving loan program loan agreement. It's a no-interest loan agreement to acquire a fire pumper truck, which is not a cheap vehicle. Mr. Nightlinger, Chief Nightlinger, Fire Chief.
Okay, before you use this resolution to, um, approve a loan from the State Fire Marshal's office, um, it'd be in the amount of $350,000 to help offset the costs of the pumper truck that we've currently got on order. Division Chief Kyle Hinch, on behalf of the city, applied for this loan in December of 2014, and, um, we just heard, got a response on the loan, November 3rd of this year. Um, again, it'll be at a 0% interest rate, and, um, Division Chief Hinch is here to answer any questions, as he did all the footwork and put this package together.
Bill?
I guess my question is how this impacts our budget. I thought we had already, um, budgeted from the capital improvement, um, or from the, from VERF for, for the entire purchase, and then, and how is, uh, and, and I, I think we were working on some kind of plan for departments to contribute differently to VERF, so how's that coming along, and how would this impact all that?
Well, the, the issue here is really that, um, we're just now digging into the VERF. I've had a long list of backlog things that we've been working on. However, w- we know that as it stands, within a few years, we will run out of funding to replace equipment that's on the schedule. And so, we also have a second pumper truck on the schedule and, in next fiscal year, I believe, so FY17, and so by doing this, um, we make it easier to be able to fund that pumper when it's due. And I think we have a ladder truck coming up.
That's correct.
Which, that will be about a million dollars.
So, how's the, uh, fire department's contribution to VERF currently being calculated?
Right, right now in this year's budget, basically, it's the same as prior year, because we haven't, there's multiple issues in the VERF. One of the issues is that over time, we've moved operating expenditures, expenditures into the VERF, so we need to deal with that issue and shift those back mostly into the general fund, and then we need to sit down and review all the, all the replacement schedules and recalculate all those contributions.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Aaron.
What did that mean?
Um, what, what that means is we have some serious financial planning to do for our capital equipment replacement.
And so, Bill, your question is asking, this no-interest loan means that we pay it back, I guess, I'm asking you guys, we pay it back over an extended period of time, of course, and what are, what is that? How long would that be?
There's a 20-year schedule, and, um, it's $17,500 per year for 20 years, at zero interest.
And you all have budgeted for that already?
We've actually budgeted for the entire purchase amount, but this will allow us to spread those payments out, and since, since there's no interest cost, that's a good deal for the city.
Charlie.
But we have one or two additional vehicles more to get over the next, next three years, five years?
It'll be over the next three years. We have, um, a pumper truck in this fiscal year, a pumper truck that we're going to propose for the next fiscal year, and then we skip a year, and then we're going to propose that a ladder truck be purchased.
Okay, so, will we, will we be taking out loans for those as well, or are we going to apply for loans to make it all feasible?
We can. We sure can. The revolving loan, it, it's based on available funds from the State Fire Marshal, so they have basically a, a set amount of money, and if it's, if it's available, we'll, we'll sure apply for it.
Elizabeth.
I'm, I'm going to say by the time we get to the, the next pumper truck purchase, we should have this all squared away and have a pretty detailed and specific plan for paying for all these purchases. And, and perhaps we will apply for a loan, perhaps that would be part of the plan.
Eric.
How does the 20-year period of the loan compare with the expected useful life of the item?
Yeah, um.
That's a good question.
Our frontline fire apparatus, we try to put on the frontline for 15 years, and then five years reserve, so it really works out really well, the 20-year cycle, that that's the expected life expectancy that we, that we would demand out of a fire apparatus.
Mike.
So, this is probably in the budget book, but I didn't bring my budget book. Can you tell me, are we retiring a vehicle or selling a vehicle, and, and what is, what is the age of that vehicle?
The, uh, the apparatus that we, um, put in the loan that, that, that we would be replacing, or, or that we would want to, uh, remove, would be the 1987 pumper. It has, huh, about, it's 29 years old, it has over 20,000 hours on it right now. But yes, that's the one that we put in the, uh, the package to, to replace.
Okay, and then, uh, longer term here, the ladder truck, um, is that an addition or a replacement?
For the, for the ladder.
Will the ladder truck be replacing an apparatus, or is it an addition to your fleet?
It would be, it'd be up for replacement, but we would probably reconsider trying to keep a reserve ladder in, in, in service.
Okay, so we, okay, we have one ladder now?
We have one ladder now, sir.
So we would keep that ladder in reserve. What's the age of that?
It's a 1999.
Okay, thank you.
So it's about 17 years old.
Oh, Diane?
Need a motion?
Yes.
I move resolution number 2015 dash 11 dash 070R.
Is there a second? Charlie, motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe, any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Manigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Okay, uh, there's a motion to add transitional housing as a special use under the R2 zoning class in Urbana. Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you, and I have communicated, uh, with several of you and also with Ms. Tyler about this, and the, um, I was motivated, uh, initially by the failure of, uh, the approval for the zoning modification for Esther's Place on North Matthews, uh, which, and I understand why people, you know, voted against it. It was because of, uh, as I understand it, and I hope I'm quoting people accurately or paraphrasing them, it was because of the implications of actually changing the zoning and what that might imply for the future use of the, uh, of the property. So, um, I, I consulted with, uh, Libby Tyler, and she helped me find my way through the various zoning classifications and the technicalities, and it, it seemed, uh, uh, to me, and, and she, I think, concurred that it would be reasonable, uh, to attempt to add transitional housing as a special use under the R2 zoning class in Urbana. And I prepared a formal resolution. I don't know if that found its way into your packet. I didn't, was it? Okay, good. So, but just for the public record, I'll read that in, it's fairly short. Whereas the provision of transitional housing is essential for solving the problem of homelessness, and whereas the need for transitional housing is projected to increase as criminal justice reforms reduce levels of incarceration, and whereas the provision of transitional housing is appropriately a joint concern of public bodies and of religious and charitable organization, organizations, and whereas joint concerns between public bodies and religious and charitable organizations are already embodied under the special use category, public and quasi-public in the R2 zoning class in Urbana, as the subcategories church, temple, or mosque, and institution of an educational or charitable nature. Therefore, and this therefore, the wording here, uh, is, this is sort of, becomes sort of technical, and I'm using, uh, wording that Ms. Tyler, uh, you know, suggested to me. Therefore, the Urbana City Council directs the zoning administrator to prepare and submit a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance for notice and review by the Urbana Plan Commission to add a new definition for transitional housing or similar use concept, and to allow such a use with proper restrictions, such as the requirement for a special use permit within the R2 and higher residential zoning districts.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Ja- Jacobson, seconded by Brown. Is there any discussion? Diane?
Just had a question. The previous, uh, 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 issue that we considered had a term home for adjustment as one of the, was the category that this house was going to be under. Now, is transitional, uh, housing a broader category, or will that replace that?
So there actually is, I think there, I think, you know, I'll defer to Ms. Tyler or ask her if I'm doing this right, but I think transitional housing and home for adjustment are essentially synonymous. Transitional housing is a widely, uh, used term, and there's actually, if you go to a website called transitionalhousing.org, which is, uh, which surveys this, the implementation of this concept throughout the country, and they give a definition of transitional housing, uh, which is, I, I, you know, which is basically what we're talking about.
Okay. Libby.
Yeah, the, um, there's a couple of components for dwelling home for adjustment, and I think what we would look at is retaining that in the zoning ordinance, um, but the primary definition for home for adjustment are essentially halfway houses, and several years ago, zoning ordinances, including our own in Illinois, were amended to make sure that halfway houses, where people are transitioning out of treatment, centers for treatment, perhaps, back into residential neighborhood, that those be allowed in at least the higher residential zones. In addition, our zoning ordinance then adds a second type of use for the home for adjustment, which is a dwelling to provide emergency shelter, and that's why we classified, um, Esther's Place under the home for adjustment category. So, under this proposal, we do research and would look at, uh, creating a new definition for, um, something like Esther's House, which is a lower, lower intensity, um, shelter in a home-like setting, and place some restrictions on the number of residents, et cetera. So we would delump, if you will, the home for adjustment, but I think we probably need to keep home for adjustment as a separate definition because of these prior, um, cases that have come up.
Okay, thanks.
Would you, would you clarify, is a, is a halfway house a home for adjustment?
Currently, that's one of the definitions for home for adjustment. Halfway houses, rehabilitation centers, crisis centers, et cetera. So, and then it clarifies that it's a dwelling in which persons live while receiving therapy and counseling to assist them in recovering from the effects of chemical or alcohol dependency. So it actually can be a fairly intensive use, and, um, if you consider rehabilitation center, crisis centers, and that's why we have them in the multifamily and higher zones. And I think this gives us an opportunity to provide for a lower intensity use that might be allowable in the lower residential zones with a special use permit.
Okay, anyone else have a question? Aaron?
So, my initial concerns, and I think some of the concerns from the residents in the area, were in particular around zoning. That was the thing that I heard the most of, and the potential changes that would possibly come. So, um, I, I, I've always thought the idea was a good idea, so, um, I'm inclined to support this. I want to, I want to make sure that I'm clear about something, though. The intensity, you spoke about the intensity levels of, uh, of the usage or chemical dependency and all that type of stuff. So, what we're talking about here is, we're not talking about a Prairie Center type of concept, so if you, would you clarify that for me, please?
And that's a good analogy, because under the current home for adjustment, something like Prairie Center would be allowed, so this would be a lesser category, and we would seek to do research on what would be the permissible intensity, uh, look at other ordinances, look at our own ordinance. This goes, this would go through the Plan Commission for Hearing, um, and then would come back to the City Council as an actual text amendment. It's important that we research it thoroughly, because, um, this would apply to all properties in the city that are zoned R2, which is a low zone, R2 and above. We wouldn't want to have something allowed in R2 that wasn't also allowed in R3, for example. So there will be, um, you know, at least one more chance to take a look at that intensity question. Then, if it is adopted, requiring a special use permit for this particular property or any other property, we would anticipate that it would need to come back with the specifics of that proposal for the special use permit.
So then the, the vote tonight is not to... So then the, the vote tonight is not to actually move this thing forward, it's actually to, to get the language, to move it to another step, to get the language clarified and get a complete understanding of what, what would be allowed to happen at this location?
This would merely, this is a way to actually start a plan case, you know, to start the research, and we sign the number, and we bring it to the, uh, future Plan Commission meeting, post a notice, so this just starts the process.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Jacobson, seconded by Brown, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? That motion carries.
Mayor?
Mr. Smythe?
Before we adjourn this meeting, we were supposed to have a town board meeting tonight. That was to, to do the budget, budgeting for the levy. We really have to have one next Monday instead, so I'm going to request right now, and I hope that everybody votes along with me, to schedule a full-blown town board meeting, special town board meeting next week.
Well, we're not in the, we're not meeting as a town board meeting right now, but we will, I, I will get it done, okay? I don't know if we can vote on a town meeting when we're in the city council, can we? I don't think so. Okay, but I, I heard what you, I heard what you said, and I, that question came up today.
Yeah, it should have happened tonight, so we, we need to have it, it, it needs to get passed.
All right. Aaron?
Just want to make this announcement, Representative Ammons would like to invite you all to stop by the district office Wednesday. The Honorable John or Jean Bertrand Iwanga is the General Secretary of the Union for the Congolese National UNC Party. He is traveling to cities across the country with large Congolese populations to bring awareness of the political issues that are challenging the Congo's democratic form of government. So on Wednesday at, from 8:00 AM to 9:30 AM, there's a meet and greet with this gentleman from the Congo, the General Secretary of the Union for the Congolese Party, and she would like to invite the, you all to come out and meet and greet with him, from 8:00 AM to 9:30 AM at 407 East University.
Okay. Diane?
Over the past week or so, I've been getting a fair number of phone calls from people in South Urbana, especially businesses in South Urbana, wondering about Windsor Road, and a couple of weeks ago, we had the, were told about the issues with cracking pavement, so I wondered when we'd be getting an update on the cause of the problem and the solution.
Just... Bill Gray will answer that question.
We've got a key meeting tomorrow with the contractor, we'll learn more about schedule and remedy and that sort of thing, and it's Craig's intention to, we were going to report next Monday night, but if there's no meeting, we'll put something in the council packet for Thursday. So, we'll know a lot more after tomorrow's meeting, tomorrow afternoon's meeting.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There being no further business at this council meeting, I'll adjourn it.